Do you want me to roll call or you guys?
Albert Brown.
Here.
Gordon Fry.
Here.
Charles Jennings.
Here.
Mike Munson.
Here.
Andrew Patton. Scott Rogers.
Here.
My man.
There's.
At this time, I'd like the Planning Commission, any of the members that have any conflict of interest or outside communications that might influence their ability on this matter today to say something or let us know. I don't think there is, so. This time, consent agenda, the minutes from February ninth. I think everyone's had a chance to read them and go over them. Take them, entertain a motion. Gordon moves to approve the minutes. Second by Mike Munson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing with regards to the amendments to zoning regulation, Article twenty-five, Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, zoning administrator and administrative variances, and the combination of the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Being as this is the only agenda item that we have. Can I just take sidebar?
Yeah.
Josh, did you get my correspondence? Were you able to reproduce it?
I'm not reproducing.
You're not reproducing it? Mr. Chair, before we pursue the agenda item, could I share what I sent to our staff person?
Mm-hmm.
With the, with the, to your staff. Hopefully my battery will hold up that long. Speak into the microphone.
The reason is such, this was sent to staff, but I've given much contemplation to the proposal that's submitted by the governing body. In light of recent developments, specifically the mayor's emphasis on the demographics within the municipality as stated in the most recent official meeting of the governing body, also known as the city commission meeting. I think we need more information. I propose that before we take action to consolidate boards, thereby reducing the number of board positions to be filled by the mayor and restricting the number of boards that people can serve on. We should present the demographic breakdown of members serving on various boards and committees. It was intriguing that the mayor referenced the need for a woman in the representation of females for the governing body. Of course, he mentioned the attractiveness of women as a premium. I was moved by his comment, but would like to know if his query for a female was inclusive of other ethnicities other than the one that was chosen. I suppose those recruited might be interested in a less intense role in the municipality. For example, the Board of Zoning Appeals met less than six times in two thousand and fifteen. Note that since nineteen ninety, we have had six females, all Caucasian, on the governing body, only two African-American males, and only one Hispanic male. In the dearth of candidates, I think the dearth of candidates might be effectively addressed by more inclusion. This theory might be debunked if we take a look at the demographic breakdown of the mayoral appointees over the current and over the past fifteen years or so. If this body does not share the mayor's concerns, perhaps we'd rather plow ahead with the board and committee consolidation discussion and the resultant reduction of opportunities for citizen participation, along with a chance to diversify those involved. But it is my conviction that we should delve into the mayor's sensitivity to inclusion. Thank you for considering this concern. We are indeed seeing increase in ethnic populations and, in fact, a decline in the non-minority population in our municipality according to the census projections. Participation should reflect as much. So, the query that I proposed was to say, let's see who our board members are and what we look like, and are we really reaching out? Are we having a problem feeling simply because we're only going to the same areas and the same population consistently looking for people? On their, I think, you know, in terms of a short loop, I saw one go from the governing body to the Planning Commission, back to the governing body. Okay? One person making that cycle out of the population, what, six thousand possible candidates to serve in those areas? And, you know, so I'm wondering if we're maybe just missing people. I had a short conversation, Mr. Chair, with the city manager who called me in response to the correspondence I sent in. He talked about, he gave me some generalities, but I was driving, so I didn't get to write those down. I was using my hands free, by the way, but I didn't get a chance to write those down. He talked about some places where we might have been overrepresented and underrepresented based on the diversity demographic. I asked for, and I gave him a specific example. We have one Hispanic builder, very active, very aggressive, so in the community. I asked if he was on the planning, what do you call it, the Building and Trades Commission? He said that he was not, but was not aware if he'd ever been approached about it or had any interest in it, you know? And I said, well, I think that's a question that we need to have answered so that we don't just keep going to the same twenty-six people and saying, serve on, you get three boards, you get three boards, I get four boards, you get four boards, and we just wear each other out. So, maybe we don't have a dearth of candidates, maybe we're just not talking to everybody. So, I would feel better knowing how well we have reached out to fill board vacancies before I say consolidate two boards into, you know, one hybrid board. I guess I'm wondering if we're actually ready to undertake this discussion.
If we were to combine the boards, would we still need to, would we still be looking at needing more people?
That's gonna depend.
On if we go from nine or seven or?
Yeah.
If we went nine, we'd still be in need, wouldn't we?
Yeah, there's only seven right now.
So, we'd still be able to, even if we combined it, still go out and reach out to groups of, you know, just basically different populations?
It's not, this commission's job, nor is it our purview to appoint people to the committee. We all serve at the pleasure of the mayor, so I don't know that.
Or previous mayors or something, yeah.
This is where, now I see where we have a lot to do with the makeup of the boards. They'd be the next, who appoints us more than us. I mean, we don't pick who serves on these.
Well, I've tried to encourage other people to apply for these boards, and they don't want any part of it.
Yeah, yeah. That's tough, so. And that's, I think that's why they have trouble getting quorums for some meetings, and the people that, they do end up agreeing to it. They, it's almost they, some of them do it begrudgingly or without much.
Well, look at the turnover we've had. I mean, this commission here has really had a turnover the last three or four years. We had one lady talk about diversification, she made one or two meetings and that was it. And I don't remember the girl's name.
That was, uh, Rowan McLaughlin.
She got some personal.
Because of her husband.
Yeah, she had personal issues.
But, you know, people balk at serving on these committees. And you can go out and drum up, try and drum up help all day long, and if you can get one guy to apply, you're doing good.
I agree, yeah.
Okay, well, again, my impetus for that was, I sat in the room about two weeks ago, and I listened to the mayor specifically call for a female for, to fill a seat. I think we need a female, and I just wonder how much passion he has for that. Surely that didn't just die with his need to fill a seat on the governing body. If he was concerned about what the demograph, that was actually a word, were you there? That was the word that he used in that meeting. He was worried about the demographic of the governing body. And so, if he's worried about it, then I think that we should give him at least some feedback that says, please address that issue, and then we'll talk about consolidation. But may very well turn out if he was that able to say, I want a woman, and get a woman in here as a candidate to fill that seat on the governing body, maybe he is as effective at saying, I want, you know, ethnic inclusion, and he can go ask them and get them also. He was really good at that.
There were four people made that decision. And I think that, you know, let's don't blame the mayor for all of it.
Well, but his words were that he wanted a woman on that, so, so he expressed a concern in his, again, I use.
I think it would be best to get him here to see what he really had before we assume what we said or not.
That's kinda what I was hoping for.
But, I mean, it's.
That's kinda what I was hoping for.
But, I mean, that's not, I don't, I kinda agree with Mike here. I don't think, whether we go from seven or nine, if we go to nine, our board will still need two people. And it's, then at that time, if some of us feel like we need to ask the city to find certain individuals to fill a board, then we can.
Let me do this then, can I, let's go ahead, and I move, we open the hearing.
All right.
And then we can discuss.
Second. All those in favor of opening the hearings?
He moved and I seconded.
All right. All those in favor of opening the public hearings, say aye. Aye. Now, this time, we'll turn it over to the city and let them discuss kind of their thoughts and go from there.
Okay, I'll tell you kind of where this came from. Back on May thirteenth, the City Commission had a work session. The topic of that work session was primarily boards as a general, all boards of the city. And one of the biggest concerns of staff in particular was we are having problems getting people to apply for, for boards. There's been efforts to put it out there in the public, and I suppose we could always do it. But, at this point, we're not meeting the candidates. And we're not even talking about whether or not the qualifiers are getting pregnant candidates for a lot of schools. So, that was kind of the impetus behind combining some boards. There's already been a couple, or I guess there's one that was two boards that were combined together. But this was brought up at that meeting. And one of the, one of the ideas that originally we had was to shrink this board, actually, from nine to seven. That was then the only change. But at the, at that commission work session, it was brought up that, well, can't we combine the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission together? And, of course, staff said yes. There is a statute, the statute that talks about Board of Zoning Appeals, how it's made up. The last paragraph of that, if I had lost paragraph, says that the Planning Commission can be the, it can be the, for example, so they can act together. So, what I did, I took what they were asking me to do, they asked me to research that. I looked at various cities in Kansas that have used that provision, and as far as I know, that statute has been, that language in that statute has been in there for many, many years. In fact, one of the communities that responded, Mulvane, no, Sterling, said that they had done this since the seventies. So, it's been around for a while. The current statute language that I'm looking at, last time it was revised, was in nineteen ninety-two. This isn't a new thing, and that's not the reason we're doing it, because it's in there. The reason we were interested in doing it was because it would shrink the amount of people that could be appointed. But there's also some advantages to having the two boards come back together. One thing that I noticed, and I kind of put in the memo that I sent out to you guys, was that the Board of Zoning Appeals kind of is on an island, so. That's not to say our current Board of Zoning Appeals is the problem, because it's not. But in some instances, it could be that they don't have ownership of the regulations because they didn't have opportunity to adopt them. And so, this would help with that. It would help them, it'd help the Board of Zoning Appeals have more ownership. This is one of the things I was looking at, although, of course.
More what?
That's not the only thing. They could have more ownership in the regulations because they helped.
Just a thought.
We would still obviously have to have two members that are not within the city limits, that wouldn't change at all. I did check, like I said, with several other cities to see how they did this. There's a couple of different ways you can do it. You can just hold a Planning Commission meeting, adjourn the meeting, and then convene the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's one way to do it, that's probably the more difficult way to do it. The other way, Endover was one example I used a lot when I was trying to come up with the new language. What they do is they actually just recess, they start with a Planning Commission meeting, and they recess into a session of Board of Zoning Appeals. Once they've taken care of the business of the Board of Zoning Appeals, they reconvene the Planning Commission meeting and continue with the business that happened. So, probably at every Planning Commission meeting, more than likely should be at least a mention, hey, the Board of Zoning Appeals meets at this time, but there's no business, so we'll just move on with our agenda. I suppose you could also have a meeting where there's nothing but Board of Zoning Appeals business. In that one, you'd probably just have the consent agenda from the last meeting. Basically, it's, it's two separate meetings, but we'll treat it as one. It's one, it's one board that serves on both boards. That, basically, the way I have seen it is that all members of the Planning Commission are also all members of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, if we were to change it today, all, all of here and there too, of course, would be also in the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now, they would still be if we were to keep it at nine, which staff feels is probably appropriate. We'd still need two more members. One of the proposals I came up with for that was, right now, we have, we have two vacancies on the Board of Zoning Appeals as well as on the Planning Commission. I did bring to, the two, two of them that are on the board here in case they would like to have some input. And then, of course, Charles is also on the Board of Zoning Appeals today too. So, we'll get a little bit of feedback from them if they so desire to present. So, that's an option for filling the two positions that we're short right now, which is the, now that's up to them. If they want to do that, certainly not pressuring them to do it, but that's an option that we have.
Let me ask you a question. Has the commission done the proper paperwork to this point for the two can be joined together?
That can't happen until we amend the zoning regulations. Because it's hard coded into our zoning, how this body is made up and how the Board of Zoning Appeals is made up, the Planning Commission has to make an amendment, so they have to recommend an amendment before anything like that can be changed. When, when we would make that amendment, then they could continue on.
In other words, all we can do is make a recommendation to do it.
It's just like any other zoning amendment.
Yeah. The thing that happens, these are two different committees, that the functions vary quite a bit. This commission can only recommend something. Zoning appeals, if they pass something, you have to go to federal court or district court.
Correct.
To get that overwritten.
That's part of the reason why you have to, very specifically in the minutes, you have to say, hey, we're moving to the other board, and then we're moving back, so you can clearly tell the difference. There's actually hasn't to be a motion to formally switch back.
Now, the next question comes up, there are several people on more than one board, two, for example. And it tells us that we can't be on more than two. So, is that gonna reshuffle your whole committee?
The language I have here doesn't do any kind of restricting like that. If, if, if there's any provisions anywhere that says you can't be on this board if you're on this board, and that's in other places, I mean, that's what kind of. I'm not aware of any other boards that, correct me if I'm wrong. The BZA seems to be the only one that requires that you're not supposed to be on any other board. Quite frankly, I think that's been broken in the past to be completely honest with you. But, just getting rid of that provision would actually help us. Because then somebody could serve on the Planning Commission slash Board of Zoning Appeals while serving on the hospital board, while serving on one of the facility boards, they could do anything that they needed to do, that might help fill some spots if they needed to.
Could you clarify that about participation in Board of Zoning Appeals? I wanted, because actually, my track was that I was, I was invited by, oh my goodness, who? I don't remember who the mayor was at the time, but to serve on what was a sunsetted steering committee or whatever, review committee. I think we worked together on that, where we were doing the comprehensive plan, was that the whole scope of that? We took all of that, and then that carried forward. I moved to, from that to zoning appeals, which had a part, and I think came to a couple of meetings in that process. And ultimately, there was a vacancy on the Planning Commission or commission, and I think that actually Mayor Tweedy, I may be misspoken by that also, asked me to serve on the Planning Commission. I asked about vacating the zoning appeals to come to Planning Commission, and I thought it was explained to me that there was a provision, a state statute that allowed one member of the zoning appeal to also serve on the Planning Commission.
That is correct, and it's actually in our zoning, it's not even a state statute.
Okay.
It's actually in the zoning that says that, basically, the way it's worded is that no member may serve on another board, except that one member can represent the Board of Zoning Appeals to the Planning Commission. So, that's, that part was covered by that, now the steering committee.
Was, was that probably more done just so you had at least a little less gap in communication between the two boards?
I think I forget why it was written that way, we just had never done it that way, my team here. And so, we thought that was a great opportunity to have Charles serve on the board.
But now, do we have to address that? Say for the example, you expand this to nine? And you, you're either going to displace engaged members of the zoning appeals board, or you would have to consider including them, and now you have everybody from zoning appeals.
Well, keep in mind, there's only three current Board of Zoning Appeals members, and here's one of them, so there's still two opening. That's why I suggested that we just bring them forward to this new board. That's how I would address what you're doing. The other two members, their terms either resigned or the term went out and may have been reformed formally.
I guess my little question would be, are we gonna be putting any conflict of interest? Do you see that happening? Or do you see us having?
Not with the two different boards. I certainly understand that question, others have asked me the same question. The way to think about that would be is, the Planning Commission set the policy, so if they're granting a variance against the policy, they're granting against their own, their own regulation.
Which we do all the time, or we recommend it.
So, this, this, and the idea, and the reason I said that this might give the Board of Zoning Appeals a little more ownership, is that you're probably not as likely to grant a variance if you created, if you had a big, major part in creating that regulation. Of course, we're not in the process of doing a major rewrite, but if we had had this kind of situation three or four years ago, then the Board of Zoning Appeals would have had a much greater involvement. Like I said, I don't have an issue with the current Board of Zoning Appeals at all. I'm not suggesting that they're frivolously approving anything. They usually go along with that recommendation. So, I don't, that's not an issue at all. More of the issue is, quite frankly, because we struggle to get volunteers. And that's, that came from the City Commission. They specifically were asking for different ways that we can make it a little easier to make sure our boards are filled and meeting all the quorums that are necessary. This board has actually been fairly good since I've been here about making, the Board of Zoning Appeals, I think, has also always had quorums they ever meet and have. But I've had other meetings, Stark Preservation Board, we had one earlier this year we couldn't meet because the government was running down. And so, they didn't have a quorum. Now, they had a full board, so that's not really a problem. But there is sometimes issues with quorums for other boards. And the bigger the board, the harder it is to make a board. But, the way, this is presented, is we're not actually increasing the size of the Planning Commission, we're still nine members.
So, basically, the commission would like us to make this change, and the city manager doesn't have a problem, staff doesn't have a problem with combining this?
No, when this first came up, I honestly was fairly indifferent. I went in to check with some other cities to see how it worked. I had several really favorable responses, Endover was one that was really favorable, he's like, it just makes sense, just do it. And then I also contacted Sterling, which kind of said the same thing, especially, and this is kind of where I came up with it might help with the ownership. Also talked with Jim Cowp, who helped us create the regulations, just to see his take on it.
Good guy.
He kind of agreed too, that, and most of the people he's worked with that wanted to do it, it was because they had struggles with volunteers. I'm guessing that's the reason that was put in statute regardless.
Yeah, well, you know, Jim has been involved with this for several years. He was the attorney for the League of Municipalities for several years. So, he's run up against all kinds of problems.
And there's no, there's no best practices. Seriously, the line in statute that says that we can do this is just a line. There's absolutely no guidance, other than making sure that you're meeting.
Would anyone from the Board of Zoning Appeals like to speak, or would, I'd like, I think some would like to hear their thoughts on it? Or any other public input?
I don't wanna speak for you. My name is Mary Benton, and I am currently the chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals. We've had a great board, always gone along very well, and we've always met when we had to. We've not had a quorum problem, and I appreciate that. I don't take the board that I go on lightly, it's on my calendar, I don't have to be called. And I am on some boards that that does not happen, and I don't appreciate the people who take those positions and don't show up. As far as what you're trying to do, I don't understand it fully, I do somewhat. And I'm not opposed to it, I want the best for both boards. And I'm certainly willing to work in whatever direction that Josh leaves us to do. And I, Charles is one of my, the members of the board, is Mr. Mills. And the other two people who are not here were excellent board members, and that's my position on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chief.
I agree with you. All right.
Said it well. Do you guys have anything else?
As a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, I think that a piece of, an important piece of why we function so effectively, I think needs to be said, gone on record, is that we have a tremendous, tremendously committed and engaged chair. I think it's important, I think that's very important, to know that the right kind of leadership can keep your board engaged. So, I appreciate the comments coming from Chairman Jefferson, Mary Benton. But I think that our leadership and commitment sets a tone for everyone. I think that's really important, and all boards, get the right leader, and your board becomes a lot more effective.
Do you have something? Yes?
Yeah, I've got some comments, if you don't mind.
No.
I'm relatively new to this board, it's my first meeting. I was asked to serve on it, and since I have not done much for this city, I decided that in my retirement, I could use that time to maybe help the city do what is necessary to advance it and make it a good city. Much more, much better than what it is now, if you understand me. I've been on school boards and others, and I've always tried to take what was before me and understand it. What is presented here tonight by Josh, I went through it about six times, and I wrote some pros and cons, or some pros for it. Number one, I think it's logical to do this because we're having trouble in the city of filling boards like this. I feel, number two, that if we do this, there's less possibility of errors in judgment because of the lack of knowledge of the basis of the board, planning board decision going to the other board. Now, I don't mean that detrimentally, but when you have two entities that are apart from each other, there's always some error that maybe come into the fore. there's always some error that maybe come into the fore there that, that will not help the decision, the board that's making the decision, the zoning appeal board. And I feel if the boards are combined, all of the members will know the information to begin with. And if there is appeal, then they will know what the thoughts of all the board members are. And then if there is an error somewhere in it, that the person that brings the appeal can't, then the boards all have the knowledge of what is said there, and they can make the right decision if they want to reverse their, their decision. The third item that I come up with is there'd be better communication between the board members if both boards are combined together in all the judgments that they need to do in the future. And as I said, this is my first meeting. I've got a lot to learn. I will study hard on the books that Josh gave me and both those books is, we've got a lot to do.
They keep you up at night that reading, don't they?
Yeah, they sure do. But that is my position on it. And if we can get others, Hispanics, more ladies on the board, I'm all for it. We can increase the number. But right now, I think it's the opportune time to bring both boards together because this is what we've got as a board right here. And I think combined together, we can make good decisions for this city here.
Thank you. Yes, thank, anyone else?
Yes, sir. You have to discount my comments earlier because that was prior to the hearing. This is the hearing. And, and so I, I'm going to reach back a ways and say, having sat in the seat of the mayor, I, I understand the task, the charge to find citizens to participate in government. Let us not forget, the objective is not to build a, a, a specialist team that works well, works and plays well together. But the objective behind municipalities and their charter and boards, committees and commissions is to get citizen participation and allow for more citizen input into the directives taken by the governing body. So I think we're waving a white flag, quite honestly, Mr. Chair, without understanding the process. We don't know. We, we, we hear a report that says it's difficult. I, I, I didn't see the report that says we, we ask a bunch of people and everybody told us no. Or, or, or is the issue that we ask a few people and they said, we're busy? I know the temptation, both as a former elected official, as well as a, as a faith community leader, the temptation to always go back to the people who say yes. And to always go back to the people who are busy, because the people who are busy are busy. The people who aren't tend to, you know, but the challenge is to continue to, the effort to reach out to more. I'm saying this decision before us is to effectively minimize even more the voice of citizens in the governmental process. I think that's very important. I think we need to understand, is the issue, we're not reaching out far enough? Or is the issue that we've gone all over the city looking for folks and absolutely everybody's saying, I'm not interested? I, I don't think that's the case. I think that there are lots of these seats that come open. And, and I, I'm going to insist that there are pockets specifically within the ethnic populations that aren't even aware of opportunities to serve in this way. Maybe they say no, but they haven't been asked. And I think that's my concern with this, that we're consolidating and saying, these are a handful of people that are always available, well, not always, but typically are available and not smart enough to say no. So we'll just go back to them, go back to them and go back to them. And it's easier to get a smaller group of people who, who always say yes, who know, who familiar and know the process than it is to keep trying to reach out and grow and expand what you're doing. So I think that we have to, we have to at least color our conversation with what does this do? With overall, the overall intent to get citizen participation in municipal government.
If this was anything like trying to fill that city commission seat, I have a feeling they asked lots of people. But I don't know, that's what we can find out from Dwayne or the mayor.
That's true.
Yeah.
That's, that, I, I, I'm not disputing that, that how they fill it is, but I'm saying they're asking us to endorse reducing the number of opportunities to participate. Just for the record, it has nothing to do with this meeting. I'm one candidate that, for that seat that was never asked by any member of that governing body.
I'd like to expand and probably explain a little bit more in depth of why we're looking at consolidating these boards. These are the boards that typically meet every month, like clockwork. And it's hard to get those individuals to commit to a two, two and a half hour long period sometimes for meetings every single month, very rigid. It's very easy, or it's a lot easier to get individuals to commit to, say, in the steering committee or a committee that is tackling one issue rather than fifty different issues. So one of the things we discussed at the city commission level and during that study session was, let's consolidate more of our traditional boards. And then let's look at more of those problem solving committees. You know, let's point a temporary committee where we say, let's, let's, let's get five, ten members of the community together for three or four meetings, let's solve that problem, and then let's move on. Their commitment's done, they can go on with their lives. Instead of being, you know what, for the next three or four years, I have to be here. You know, on a certain day, every month, I can't plan around it, you know? And that's a huge commitment for anyone. And, and you all realize that. It's a huge commitment to be here every month like clockwork for three years. Some of you have been on here ten, twelve, you know, whatever it may be, years, that you've committed yourselves, which is great. We appreciate it, but we do understand that the times, they're changing. The individuals that we, that need to get involved, don't get involved just for that fact, you know? It is such a huge time commitment. So what we're wanting to do is go more towards, towards those focus groups. You know, those individual committees and target specific issues. That way, we can get better participation, broader base interest from the community, especially if the topic is something of interest to them, and move on. Have them participate and then move on to the next.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. No, Mr. Chair, actually, thank you. That speaks to what my concern is. We, we haven't, there's been no talk about what's the process for how we get.
It was explained in the study session. It was done poorly as far as from that moving forward. But really, that is a process that we're wanting to do. If there is an issue that the planning commission would like to get some targeted discussions on, they bring that to the, to the city commission through, through staff representation or through a motion of the planning commission saying, we'd like to get a steering committee to tackle this issue. And then we do it. We get members interested. We say, hey, we have, you know, we want five to seven or ten individuals to meet like three or four times, discuss the issue, and then your commitment's done. You can go on with your lives. And we work around their schedule, weekends, nights, wherever it may be. And that is our, ultimately our end goal, what we're trying to accomplish.
Mr. Chair, now that addresses my concern. I really was getting distressed over the notion, we're just blowing it off and saying, well, it's not our responsibility. We have some responsibility. They wouldn't have asked us to meet to discuss this.
And there are two boards, I just.
You may.
There are two boards that are statutorily required or, or required from the state and/or federal government. The ADA board, human relation commissions, it's actually all underneath one umbrella now. At the state level, they look at it from conferences titled, Title VI. Title VI is our new regulations we have to follow under, which, which addresses disability concerns, ethnicity concerns. It addresses all of that underneath one umbrella. So we are trying to combine these boards, the other two boards are combined, into one board that has more expertise, and they have to meet regularly. They, they, that's one of those commitments. The Board of Zoning Appeals, it doesn't meet necessarily regularly. It's as needed board. But the planning commission is a regular meeting. We have to have a regular meeting of the planning commission setup. And so that's why it's a little bit more rigid. That's why it's harder to get volunteers. But every other board the city has technically is not as rigid and doesn't need to be as rigid. And they, unfortunately, a lot of these boards, they lose direction because they're so focused on the one issue for so long. And then once that issue is, resolves itself, then they're kind of wondering what's next, you know? What should we tackle? And it's, it's very complicated for a lot of these boards to tackle these large issues because it's, you need some fresh thought. You need, you need more individuals in the public speaking at these meetings, giving direction and guidance. So that's ultimately what our, our end goal is for the boards and committees.
Now, I didn't mean that, that it doesn't matter what these boards comprise of. I just didn't say it's not up to us to appoints, who, who gets chosen to be appointed or who volunteers to serve. Is there a list of people waiting to be on a board?
Unfortunately, no. You know, I, we try to encourage those that have shown an interest before to try to get involved in some of the different boards. But of course, some individuals like this component of it. They may not be able to meet at the time. They may have family commitments that just restrict them from meeting. So there's a lot of different issues out there. But as far as trying to find volunteers, we're constantly accepting applications. We, we try to put it out there as often as we can that we have board openings, but unfortunately, it's just very difficult to get individuals involved. And that's why we have to rely upon the boards and the board members such as yourselves to try to draw that interest, bring them to the table. We were able to do that with the beautification advisory board recently and, and the last year. We've asked them, who do you know that has an interest in this? Can you bring them? Get, make them bring in an application for us so we can get to the mayor and commissioners to make an appointment. And that's been successful for us. But unfortunately, we still have three open positions now, I believe, on that board. So, I mean, we're trying to get the word of mouth out there, but it's just, it's very difficult.
It's kind of a universal problem.
It is. We're, we're not immune to it. We really are not. That, and, you know, been to plenty of conferences in the last five years, and they've all addressed the same concern. It's because the millennial generation and the tech, you know, the, the new, young group, they just don't want commitment, you know? They don't, some of them don't mind it, but they want those short commitments. They want to be able to tackle an issue and move on. But they also need to see results. Just because they meet and discuss an issue, if, if the commission and, and administration doesn't act upon that committee's wishes, then we are failing them as citizens and as a committee. So that's where their role comes in, as far as commission and administration.
So for Charles's concerns, basically, we, we would be eliminating chances for four people to volunteer. But we still have, how many openings for volunteering right now?
We have, I would probably say maybe ten across the city. I mean, that's probably even being underestimated, I would say.
Vacancies, vacancies.
When you ask for volunteers, it's not a recruiting process?
No, no, there is none because unfortunately, staff, we leave that up to the governing body members and we leave that up to the board members. We encourage individuals, if they come into our office and they're passionate about a certain issue, to make an application to certain committees. And, and we encourage them to do so. But unfortunately, when they start looking at, okay, I got to meet every month for how many years? Three years, you know, and I have a chance to be reappointed, I don't know if I want that much of a commitment, you know? So you lose a lot of individuals just based upon that, that criteria.
We currently have sixty-eight spots filled and across our city boards, and that's from sixty-four people. We have four people like Charles who are on two different boards. I, yeah, Mike too. I think, I think at least ten vacancies, possibly fifteen. And that's not counting the new board that we formed, which can be from five to seven members. So we've actually, we would be reducing potentially, you know, five opportunities with this combination, but we're looking at opening up five other ones too. And Commissioner Jennings, I would definitely encourage, if you know of anyone who's interested in serving on the equal opportunity and accessibility advisory board, this is something we can bring to that board. How do we get more ethnic and gender and minority representation in our governing process? Because that's, that's entirely what that board is tasked of doing, increasing opportunity and access to populations that haven't had it. So we, as staff, we agree that demographically, we're probably not quite in line with what we'd like to be, but we're not turning anyone away either. I mean, we, I can't remember the last time we denied an application. We have a couple, yeah, we have a couple waiting in the wings. For instance, there is a, a female who's interested in being on this board, but we've held that application until we decided what we were doing, membership wise. And we wanted to offer the first opportunity to the Board of Zoning Appeals members if they wish to be on this body before we go that route. But I mean, we've, we've, since I've been here for a year now, this affects both my positions. As public information officer, it's my job to get the information out. And I do agree, we could do a better job of that. One way we've tried to do that is with our new city website, which can be translated into a multitude of languages. So we're hoping that helps the information be more accessible to maybe people who don't speak English as their first language. But also, just, you know, we try to do more releases. Nick and I have been on Facebook so many times in the last year. You know, we have a variety of active Facebook groups that have a variety of concerns in the city. But when we go on there and we challenge them, either to call us or come talk to us directly about a problem that they're discussing or to volunteer for a board, it's crickets. I think we've gotten one, maybe two volunteers in a year that way. And as he said, I work at the beautification board. That board was completely defunct. We relaunched it before I came on board with five members. And every time I gain a member, I lose a member. And I have not even been able to keep, it's at four right now. So I literally can't have a, a meeting, much less a quorum, if more than one person is out of town. And it's been a real struggle to try to, to get that going, to the point where now we're kind of thinking, do we need to combine that with something? But it's already a combined board. It used to be beautification board and the tree advisory board. So even combination does not necessarily solve the problem. I agree, there's some, some outreach that needs to occur and we're continuing to look at ways to do that. And as special projects coordinator, this has kind of been one of the things I've been tackling. So I, you know, I talked to Josh and, and all these ideas came together at the city commission level. But this wasn't one of the ones we were proposing. This really did come from the city commission and that's why we brought it to you. The only other thing I wanted to point out is, in the statutes, there's often not an upper limit on membership. We do have an upper limit in the city ordinance of nine for the city boards, but that's always something we could look at. If we get the applicants, we can make boards. We can, as Nick said, we can form temporary committees. That's kind of where we're starting to look at for maybe capital improvement planning. We can make the spaces available, you know? We just need people to be interested and that's kind of the battle we've been, we've been waging. But as Josh said, there is no upper limit to your planning commission size other than the one we as a city have self-imposed. There is a limit to the size of a board of zoning appeals that's independent, that it may be no more than seven members. But the statute is not clear. It's probably something we have to run by the city attorney and whether that applies to a combined planning commission, board of zoning appeals. One thing we could do to satisfy that, if it's something we have to abide by, is we could basically exclude the two members who live outside of the city limits from participating in the board of zoning appeals portion of the meeting. Which actually has some, that makes some sense because we don't have zoning outside the city limits. So those issues would only be pertinent to, to city residents. And that's something you can make in your motion. But like I said, we'll have to probably run that by legal counsel before we formalize this with an ordinance. So those, those are just kind of the things we've been looking at. And this is just one of the ways we're trying to address this. But we're totally sympathetic to what Mr. Jennings has said. And we have other proposals in the works and other things we're looking at doing to try to increase citizen participation and trying to use technology to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to say two things in closing the, the discussion of my concerns. Is number one, that, that with the information, the objective of, of sunsetted smaller, targeted committees and subcommittees, that's encouraging. That's encouraging because that does create the opportunity to, to engage different populations rather than to keep going to the same feeding trough. Now, I'm going to also say that I do feel extremely validated in having expressed my concerns because I had a rate of about four to five times, four to five, not forty-five, four to five times per month, I'm inside city hall either for these meetings or to chat with the city manager or to, to pay for my, pay my monthly gold bill. And, I'm sorry, that was a D. But so I remain distressed that the city would be putting together an equal opportunity and accessibility board or committee. And at no point in time has anybody said anything to me about that. I, I, I just, you know, and to me, that's, that again says, okay, why are you in it with the same population serving on these boards? Because that could have conceivably been staffed. I don't know what the timeline is on it with, without me pressing this discussion, without me even knowing that such a board. with, without me pressing this discussion, without me even knowing that such a board was being brought into existence. And, and that remains to be my concern. You know, that would be, especially as it relates to equal opportunity, that would be, seem to be the type of thing where a person would be going to targeted groups, uh, with the intent of saying, we want to let the protected classes, that's federal language, the protected population, class populations, to be aware that we're formulating this. Uh, uh, I have a, a clergy, a pastoral colleague, uh, in Coffeyville, Kansas, who's called me three times now. And he's asked me, uh, recruiting citizens away from here, because he's asking me if I have any awareness, and I've already given him two names, of minority candidates who would be interested in law enforcement. And he says, if you don't have him, get ahold of me, because the city of Coffeyville is actually looking to hire, uh, new officers. And the police chief, uh, the city manager and the mayor have all been very explicit, according to him, that their objective is to hire minority candidates. They want ethnic minority candidates. They want ethnic minority candidates, to the point that they're asking lay citizens to work their connections and contacts and friends. He's calling me and saying, do you know someone? The whole conversation is if we are even able to help them get set up in housing in Coffeyville. That's how badly they want to diversify their law enforcement staff. Okay? So, so I also, while you guys are sharing things, I also now I'm aware that other communities are being very progressive about saying, we don't just want our protected class people to belong. We want them engaged, we want them represented, you know, we want them to be a part or, an active part of the community. That remains my pointed concern is that, you know, we just, you know, so they, I'm just saying, you gotta get outside the city hall, and you're gonna have to go some places where you're not comfortable going. And you're gonna have to talk to some people that you don't normally see in order to say, we're looking for somebody. And maybe you have ten conversations and you get two candidates, but that's for the betterment of the community. My former, uh, executive director, when I worked at Ponca, it said, if it were easy, anybody would do it. It's not easy, you know, but then again, they signed up for it. So they should fulfill their fiduciary role to reach out into the community. Okay, I'm done.
Listen, you're done?
I'm done.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay.
Okay. All right, are we ready for a question?
Call the question, I guess.
We may, we may make some minor tweaks to the language that's actually presented in our article, just to be clear. Uh, especially the one about the makeup of the combination. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna need to check with legal counsel on that for sure. Um, so maybe some little minor things, but the overall would be, will match whatever their motion is right now. So if you choose to make a motion to, to, to the combination, I guess is the best way to say that, then the language would definitely reflect that. But I just wanted to make it clear, there's gonna be some minor little tweaks, and some of them are just typographical.
Well, I would think those, those minor changes ought to be presented here before we make that decision.
Well, the main one, the main change I'm referring to is, really, that is the main one. Um, there's, there's nothing in the language that I provided to you, well, there is, actually. The way it's worded right now is that the combined board would serve both functions, all nine members. That's how it's written here. So if we find out that that is not going to meet statute, it's not gonna work exactly the way it's supposed to, that would be something we might change.
To exclude the.
To exclude, uh.
That's what I said, right.
Unless you want to do extraterritorial zoning.
That would be a backhanded way to do it.
I'm gonna say probably not wanting to do that.
And if you did that, anyone had a choice, you have.
I'm kidding. No, I'm just being silly, yeah, so, yeah.
That intermediary cord that the chair was wanting to explore.
I mean, my thought here is, let's just, if the call to question is to do that, and do we need, are you saying you want to know what would happen if the minor change would be, all of us would serve as a planning commission, and then when it came to the board of zoning part, the two outside members would have to?
What you're asking us to do right now is to vote on an issue that's not defined.
Yes. Now, I'm asking you, is that, is he clarifying it for you? Is he getting, is it being clarified?
He said some minor changes. Do we have one minor change? Do we have?
I looked through this just now, what we were talking about. That is the only change other than some minor little typographical things like capitalization and.
Yeah, well, that's just poor typing, I understand that very.
We always do, every time we do an amendment, we try to find those little things that we missed and.
I haven't made a motion, I've called for the question.
We want to most, well, I think we'd first need to probably close a public hearing.
Close.
All right, close the public hearing, so then we can make, second.
Second.
Yes, I was explaining it to him. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No. All right, now we can decide what we want to do. And our options are, nothing, recommend this changes, or not make the changes. Those are our options.
Make a motion.
What's your motion?
My motion is to recommend approval of the amendments to the zoning regulation, Article twenty-five, including the combination, the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Um, do we want to, that motion to include the changes that Josh just mentioned with regards to the, from the nine to seven, looking into that possible change?
Yes.
Okay. Do everyone understand the motion? Do you guys understand the motion? Do you wanna, do we have a second?
Second.
All those, I guess we can't do that, we got a roll call. So it's been seconded, roll call vote at this time with regards to Commissioner Brown's motion to amend the zoning regulation, Article twenty-five, Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, zoning administrator, administrative variances, and the combination of the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals with the changes with wording with regards to the number of members that can serve on the Planning Commission, nine, and those serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals, seven, in which case, the two outside, outside city limits would be excluded or not members of the. Yes.
Mr. Chair, would you repeat that again?
So, I just want to make sure everyone understood, that's how it's, that's being worded, you understand that? Before we do a roll call vote, everyone is very clear on that. So, all right, roll call vote.
Al Brown?
Aye.
Gordon Fry?
Aye.
Charles Jennings?
Reluctantly, yes.
Reluctantly, yes.
Aye.
Mike Munson?
Yes.
Andrew Patton? Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Brian Wells?
Aye.
Motion has been approved with regards to recommending the changes that we just mentioned, or the combination of the two boards. Uh, at this time, I see no other items. I do know we will eventually have to get with Josh in the next coming weeks to figure out, uh, reorganization of the board.
That would be the key. Uh, we would need to do that anyways.
Yes.
It's been a while since we did it. But with this combination, we would certainly want to reorganize, uh, vote on chair, vote on vice chair.
And I have no other items, do you?
Yes.
So in, in that, Mr. Chair, will there be one chair over both boards? Or will there be a chair for each board?
It'd be one chair that would serve one vice chair.
One chair.
Yes.
So that's why it's really important that we have a vice chair. Even more important than it is today.
That would be potentially, neither Brian nor I could be chairman or vice chair if we had to chair the committee.
Why is that, sir?
If we can't serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals, then we couldn't be chairman or vice chair.
We may have to look into some amendments to qualify you for that.
Some, some of that has to do with the procedure of the board, it doesn't necessarily have to be.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could have the vice chair be the chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals component if you wanted to. You're free to do whatever you want. Just to give you an idea on the timeline, we're not anticipating a meeting of either board next month. We will have a first reading of this proposed change at the July fifth city commission meeting, potentially the second reading in July nineteenth. Um, if it's passed and approved, we would appoint whoever the members are to fill the remaining two seats, probably at the first meeting in August. And then if you guys have a meeting in August, you'll be fully constituted and, and we can figure out the organization then. So there's no hurry on any of this. Thank you, and I would encourage the, those who are on the Board of Zoning Appeals to stay on. I think their knowledge and expertise in it would be valuable. So, that's my own opinion, but I think a lot of us probably agree with that, so. And at that time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, second?
Move second.
Third?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.